Good evening, everyone. I'm calling this meeting to order. Today, we will have an update to their response of COVID-19 in Renton. Welcome, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for joining us.
Hello. Thank you for having me, Ruth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we will start with update and next steps for COVID-19.
Would you like me to start now?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, we're doing really well with these new meeting formats, and I want to thank you all for being extremely flexible in trying to figure out the best way to continue business in these critical times. So, first of all, I'd like to thank the council for giving the support necessary to continue to do the work here at the city. I've tried to be in constant communication with council president and update council as much as possible. And I do have a brief little statement here that I want to read. And then afterwards, most of the department heads are online, and we could ask some questions. So, I'm going to go ahead and go into my statement here. I'm addressing you this evening in one of the most unique situations in world history, a significant worldwide health epidemic from a novel coronavirus that caused COVID-19. Our city had to take unprecedented steps in conjunction with federal, state, and county governments in order to respond to this public health crisis. As mayor, I've done this in consulting with the elected leadership at all levels along with our staff and the advice of public health experts. In many ways, the city was prepared for this challenge. The city has invested time and money in this.
Thank you.
And response. The city has operational plans in place all for the departments to manage during the emergency. And this has served as a support pillar in maintaining our continuity of operations. Well, this has served us well in previous emergencies. One of the particular challenges is this is unlike any emergency we have ever faced in the past. Our governing systems are being tested in ways not seen before. Decision-making at times requires decisions made at the state or national level are having to be made at times at local levels. My primary focus has been on ensuring the safety of our residents, employees, and helping provide resources to our business community. We have done all we can to make sure that our most vulnerable citizens have access to services, and we have been in contact with our nonprofit partners to make sure that they have the support necessary to be successful. During this time, I know there will be many individual challenges for you and your family. There is likely tremendous uncertainty about your individual finances during this time. I can commit to you to continue to advocate at the state and federal government for assistance that will help you during this time. Under our democratic form of government, the state and federal government have the primary authority and resources with which to help the majority of Americans. However, there are actions at the city level of which I have responsibility, and I have taken action in those areas, including but not limited to suspending all water shut-offs, waiving late fees and charges on city utility bills. We are currently working with customers on up to 90 days' notice. I have also issued an emergency order supporting the governor's prohibition on evictions. The other critical area is your personal safety. Social distancing has been advised as the public health measure to best slow the virus. As many of you have noticed, this has been a challenge for some of our residents to comply with, gathering at certain bars or restaurants or at certain recreational amenities in city parks. This is not going to help us get past this crisis. It is going to take all of us working together to succeed. The city doesn't have the local powers to enforce these orders from the governor, but I have taken steps in order to help our residents, keep our residents safe. Yesterday, I issued a joint release with the mayors of Kent and Auburn encouraging residents to follow the governor's advice and follow safe social procedures. Additionally, I have ordered closure of facilities within the city park system that are not amenable to social distancing. That includes playgrounds, basketball courts, and other city facilities within the park. I have also asked our police department to advise and educate those residents and businesses that aren't following the public health protocols on social distancing. I know that this will be very hard on our local economy. We've been working closely with our business community to make sure that they are aware and can access all of the state and federal resources that become available to them. To be sure that our grocery retailers are able to receive deliveries in the evening, I have issued an emergency proclamation waiving the city's noise ordinance for retailers to receive deliveries of goods outside of normal business hours. We have also kept our permit center open and functioning both virtually as well as allowing for appointment in-person drop-offs of plans and fees during a one-hour window daily. We have also waived late fees for business licenses and renewals, waived permit requirement for pickup zones for restaurants and grocery, waived permitting fees for emergency building inspection. We are encouraging electronic plan review and permitting online while in-person support for critical paper-only items are still underway. For example, certificate of occupancy, prioritizing resources to support the new medical office building at U-Dub Valley Hospital so it can be completed as soon as possible. We are also not enforcing non-renewal of business licenses at this point, and I'm considering waiving future filing deadlines for the upcoming quarter filing due April. These are a few steps that we have taken to date and intend to remain flexible enough to explore additional items as may be needed. We want to especially thank our employees. Nearly 300 have been able to work remotely in order to continue to provide services to our residents. Additionally, many critical personnel, including our police officers and water work operators that allow us to have to show up, continue to respond and provide services and safety to our community residents. We are doing all we can to secure supplies in order to help them do their jobs safely. Our employees have been called to service during these challenging times, and they have responded. There are many ways that the city has responded. They are outlined in the attached documents, which goes into tremendous detail on various responses by each department within the city of Renton. All of our administrators are here tonight to answer questions that council members may have. I also want to thank council and in particular, council president Ruth Perez for the assistance and support provided during this time. In closing, I want to thank the efforts of our citizens, employees, businesses, and other agencies in coming together for hopefully the best possible outcome from the crisis. We still need help from all our residents to practice safe social distancing and health practices, like regular hand washing. It may not seem like you are saving lives and your health system just by staying home, but if you can do what that you are literally saving others from catching this disease, take the opportunity to check in with your neighbors or others who may be at high risk or vulnerable and see if there's something else you can do safely do, like running to the grocery store to help them. I have lived in Renton my entire life. I know all of us working together can help get us through this. That's the pre-written stuff, and I would like to add a little ad lib here, and that is the efforts amongst our administrators and city staff has been outstanding. And it's really amazing to watch these professionals do their job on a daily basis. And it really has shone a light on Renton as a community in terms of our ability to continue to do businesses such a high level. We were ahead on so many things going into this crisis, and we continue to make sure that we are on the front end of each one of these issues that come up. So, with that, I would like to turn it back to you, Ruth, and if there's any questions for myself or other administrators, we'd love to take them at this time.
Madam President? Madam President, this is Valerie.
Ruth, you're muted.
Sorry, I was following orders. So, thank you, Valerie. Just give me one second. I hear you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to all the employees for the hard work that you have done during these days and to keep our residents safe more than anything else and also helping our businesses and our most vulnerable population. So, with that, I would like to open the floor for council members to ask questions, and we will start with council member O'Hara.
Thank you. And I also want to say thank you to you, Mayor Pavoni, and council president Perez and all of the other council members and administrators for their leadership, strong, consistent leadership throughout this. And I don't know if you guys had an opportunity to watch the Inslee press release, but effective immediately, we are, well, I think actually in 48 hours, we are officially on statewide lockdown.
Thank you, council member O'Hara. Yes, indeed, I heard that. I was watching, and that was one of my questions. I don't know if you, Mr. Mayor, or the city administrator, or if the chief police is available to us. How are we planning to enforce the orders from the governor?
Thank you.
I think that we could probably best pass that off to Chief Ben Bailey to give us an update on enforcement at this time.
Yes, sir. And this is something that we've been practicing and trying to put out. Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, you can hear me.
We can hear you.
What I would like to go over is something that we've been putting out to the departments and been working with all the Washington State Police Chiefs as far as our messages.
Sorry. May I ask everybody, please, to turn off your cell phones and as well as turn down your TV sound? Thank you. Continue, chief.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So, we've been going over and figuring out what would be the best way to implement this, and everybody was kind of in the same opinion that we really want to work with an advise-and-educate piece first. We're not really looking to detain, arrest, or ticket folks for these violations, but to actually be out there, be visible, and encourage the enforcement piece by, you know, conversation, by education. Most of the time, just our presence and working with the public, we can accomplish that. So, we do have worked with the city attorney's office about what laws are actually in place when there's such a public order, and there's some RCWs that allow us to enforce. But right now, we are doing the advise-and-educate piece as far as getting out and talking with the community, constant updates through social media, and all of our officers being aware that we're really trying to encourage people to stay home just by their own volition and not have to take any enforcement action.
Thank you, chief. Any more questions? Or comments? Okay, I do have.
Madam President? Yes, I'm sorry.
Council member Ben?
Yes, so as the chief mentioned, it is currently right now the educational phase. And so, for example, if there is an individual after the 48, when the 48 hours starts, were to be found, you know, driving around or whatever have you, what would be your protocol? Would just educate? And then if it's the second, if they have repeating violation, how does that come into play?
Yes, ma'am. Right now, there's nothing as far as passes or licenses for people, so there's no, there's not going to be any checkpoints or anything of that nature. The governor made it clear through WASPIC, which is the Washington State Police Chiefs. This is really about the encouragement piece and working together as far as keeping people off the streets. The worst-case scenario, if there was somebody that continued to be a problem at a park or something like that, we could take enforcement action through the courts. But again, we are strongly encouraging just the advice piece. We've been doing that so far, and we haven't had any problems. So, we're hopeful that continues. But should something happen, we do have an enforcement action that we can take as far as through the courts. We don't have anything as far as, you know, SCOR jail is not accepting any non-mandatory arrests, so this would be simply a procedure of paperwork.
Any more questions?
Yes, Madam President?
Yes, council member McElroy.
Yes, so my question is on the, along the line of parks and access to those. If someone's, so I saw, I drove by Liberty Park today, and I did see we had a couple of Renton police officers parked there. To me, the act of enforcement probably is going to be less important because I know we'll have other things, other that police officers have to attend to. What else are we doing to more passively encourage people to stay away? I saw the skate park was taped off. That was good. I've heard people on Idol and suggest taking down basketball rims. Or are we closing any entrances to any parking lots? And I apologize if that was covered and I missed it.
So, a lot of the details that you're talking about are in that sheet that was included with your information. We did ask for all the park entrances to be closed. There was one exception, and that was the entrance to the parking lot to pool on, and that was allowed to allow the two businesses to continue to do pickup. And we are continuing to escalate different creative measures to try and enforce and discourage residents from joining in activities in those places. So, yes, to the answer to closing the parks and doing any kind of methods to take down hoops or any of those things, as we go along, those will increase, so.
Okay. And then the other one I noticed was interesting when I drove by Liberty Park. There were people out there playing tennis, so while the basketball courts were shut down and the skate park was shut down, the tennis courts are still open. And I realize tennis is kind of a social distancing sport, but I'm assuming that's going to apply uniformly to all recreational facilities.
Yeah, we'll end up locking those down too.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, this is Kelly, Councilwoman McGurman. Thank you for the question. To the mayor's point, yes. If we need to take further precautions, we'll definitely take basketball hoops down. The tennis courts should have been locked down today at some point, so our teams are moving out, putting caution tape around all of the amenities that the mayor had mentioned. And then we've got signage that's printed, and we'll be posting all of that throughout all of the parks that we have, describing exactly what's not allowed. Unfortunately, not all our parks have gates, so as best we can, our teams will be patrolling and making sure things stay safe within the system as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Kelly. And I'm going to ask you another question, Kelly. I know that we have been providing meals for seniors and veterans at the senior center. How is that going?
Thank you, Council President Perez. Yes, it's been actually going excellent. It started out a little slow, but as of Friday, we actually had over 65 people show up for lunches, which is close to what our average is on a normal day. We're actually providing some additional take-home snacks for over the weekend so that the seniors have that for them as well. And then our team, as part of their teleworking, they're contacting all the seniors either by phone or through email, keeping in touch with them and making sure that they're staying healthy and well and don't need additional services. And we've actually got some other information and surveys that will be going out to the senior and vulnerable population areas and agencies, asking for additional needs that they may have.
Thank you, Kelly. Any more questions or comments?
Yes, on that line, Kelly, thank you so much for the update. How about the neighborhood and recreation? I guess the neighborhoods. Have we informed some of the HOAs? Or is it just kind of through the newsletter of some of the stuff that we're doing?
Yeah, thank you. It is majority through the newsletter as we want to stay consistent with the mayor's message. We have been sending out updates as far as what they can get online available. So, some of the grants have been extended out a little bit. Obviously, we don't have that face-to-face process in place yet, but definitely a lot of information is going out to the neighborhoods.
Kelly, and on that line, can you make sure that the homeowners and associations, basically the residents at least, get the email with the updates of the newsletter from the mayor?
Yes, we can confirm that. I'm sorry.
That they are in that database? You know, there is a database of people that if they subscribe, they receive directly to their email the newsletter?
Correct. I'll confirm. I'm sure that those are being sent out, but I will confirm that for you.
Thank you, Kelly.
This is Valerie again.
Council member Ben, council member O'Hara, yes.
Thank you, council president.
Kelly, another question would be, what about our recognized community neighborhoods, our neighborhood contacts?
I believe that was what council president Perez was talking about. So, are all of our associations that are in our recognized neighborhoods, the leadership that sends out all of the correspondence to their neighbors, those emails will be going out, yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any more questions or comments?
Yes, council president?
Yes, council member Corbin.
Yeah, I haven't seen it mentioned in any official advisories to this point, but one thing I would like to just share with the rest of the council is our experience with the medical system, working with my wife's broken arm, really drove home for me how difficult of a time it is just to get, you know, normal sort of emergency care. And so, what I've been telling people close to me is be extra careful out there. You know, it's good to get exercise, and it's good to, people have time to do chores. But I would suggest, for instance, that, you know, somebody who might think they're going to go up and clean their gutter might think twice about it because normally, if you fall off your ladder or get hurt, it's not that big of a deal. You go to the emergency room. Now, that's a huge deal. It's really complicated. There's a lot of doctors that just can't see people because they don't have testing, and then, you know, a lot of offices closed. So, for what it's worth, just encourage people to really, it's sort of, I mean, we all, every day, we sort of make risk assessments. You know, we want to engage in activities. Obviously, nothing's 100% safe, and you have to enjoy life and get your jobs done. But the risk assessment needs to be a little bit different now because of the difficulty getting medical care and because of the need to leave the beds open. So, just encourage people to be very careful when they get out and go do these things.
Council member Corbin. I'm sorry, council president?
No, I was just going to say that for us that don't know, unfortunately, council members Corbin's wife broke her arm last Tuesday, and they couldn't, they have to perform a surgery. And the earliest that they could have done it was Friday, but they ended doing it Thursday. But she was in incredible pain during those days, and it was, it was very unfortunate, but as he mentioned, very eye-opening of what is happening right now. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, council member Corbin, that is actually a really good point, and it's something that I've been telling my two young boys that are bouncing off the walls at home and think they're unbreakable, exactly what it's going to be like if something happens to them. So, that actually is a really good message, and we certainly could add that to part of our messaging to get that out in the community for sure, so.
Thanks.
And now, talking about safety, I think Chief Marshall is joining us as well, and I would love if he can give us a little briefing about what the Renton Regional Fire Authority has been doing to keep our community safe and all the extra precautions that they are taking specifically with our nursing homes in the area to be able to protect our senior population because we all know what happened in Kirkland. So, Chief Marshall?
So, council president, I actually had the bullet points, and I was going to provide, but I'm perfectly happy to allow Chief Marshall to take the lead on this one, so.
I'm sorry. Whoever, both of you are very, very knowledgeable about this issue, so it doesn't matter. Whoever wants to brief us about this, it's okay.
I'll yield to the mayor, and then I will follow up. How's that?
That's great.
Well, I will say that the relationship between the Renton Regional Fire Authority and the city has never been closer in terms of us working as one unit. You know, I mean, they, having been part of watching that go out on their own and forming their own organization, it's under times like this that you really see how well things are working and I will say that things between the city and the fire authority are doing very well. So, the quick bullet points that I'll point out that were, that Chief Marshall and I discussed are, the first one is the RFA had one significant exposure to our members in which four firefighters were impacted. They were placed on home quarantine. This exposure took place two weeks ago today, and all four have been tested positive and have returned to work or actually tested negative and returned to work. We have others that have developed COVID-like symptoms. Those members were placed on administrative leave and are awaiting test results. Secondly, the King County Fire Chiefs, King County Emergency Medical Services, labor groups, ambulance companies, and medical control doctor at Harborview have been holding daily meetings for updates. Through these meetings, they have developed best practices and unified messaging to the community. King County Fire Chiefs have a member embedded in the King County Emergency Coordination Center that helps to identify resources and assets needed for King County Fire Departments. The RFA currently has enough personal protective equipment, which is PBE, that includes N95 masks, gloves, and gowns to last the next six months, given our current use of rate, rate of use. We have seen slight increases in absenteeism as a result of aggressive self-screening to ensure that firefighters are not exposing one another or the community. In the event of significant absenteeism, King County Fire Chiefs have established coordinated unit brownouts to ensure that we maximize our ability to protect our public. And lastly, we have worked with local extended stays to create a remote isolation site for the membership, should it be necessary. This allows us to not impact emergency response by utilizing fire station or depend on city resources. So, with that, do you have anything you'd like to add to that, Chief Marshall?
I think the only thing that I would like to build on that you said and council member Corbin also mentioned is this idea of really being careful with, urging people to be careful with the choices that they're making as they're out and about and cleaning their gutters. Is currently, King County is at, we're implementing the pandemic plan at a modified Level 2. But this could very easily change and go to a Level 1. And at a Level 1, the way that emergency response works changes dramatically. So, you will likely not have the fire department responding to a broken arm because we are going to be busy handling just critically life-threatening events. And we're currently building messaging in preparation for that. Most of the King County Fire Chiefs truly do believe that, as we're now watching our hospitals reach their capacity, that we're going to have to shift the way that we do business. It can't be business as usual where someone calls 911, and we just load them up in one of our aid cars and take them to the hospital. The hospitals are going to be going on divert, and we're going to have to start making some really challenging decisions about how we're going to be treating people. So, the more that people can prevent, not only stay at home, prevent exposure to the COVID-19, but any risks that they can reduce, that would be helpful to the entire system.
Thank you very much, chief. Any questions to the? Thank you, chief.[1751.71] Thank you, Chief. Thank you again for everything that you guys are doing. Thank you for the effort to coordinate specifically with the nursing homes around the area to make sure that you have a direct line and that you may do, keep them updated about how to prevent for our seniors to get infected and specifically how to quarantine them and what does that mean?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. And I guess just to add on that, you mentioned that and that was part of our briefing at the RFA, is that we do have our deputy chief, who's our health and safety officer for our employees, also is for the community, has actually proactively gone out and made contact with each one of these high-risk facilities and is working with them to help bolster the information that they're getting from CDC and King County Public Health and ensuring that we have a direct line of contact with them instead of just relying on information that's going to come through public health. So it's kind of creating a more direct route directly to the fire department, to the city, so we'll have that information as soon as it becomes available.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. Does anybody else have more questions about the COVID-19 response and what are the next steps that we are going to be taking with this new directive that the governor just issued as a stay-home order? No?
Yes.
Council Member Benedetti?
Yes, asking both chiefs, have we seen an increase in the number of responses that we've needed to have to our persons who are experiencing homelessness? I know that they are particularly vulnerable at this time.
This is Chief Van Bailey. Good evening, ma'am. We have not seen an increase personally. It's been pretty status quo overall. Our calls all over the city have dropped about 28%.
Yeah, and I can say that our calls, our call volumes remain consistent and we have not seen any changes in any call type really out of the norm, including any responses to homelessness.
And if I may, Council Member Benedetti, we fully understand that our vulnerable population doesn't have a large voice and so we've made sure that we've been in constant contact with the groups that are providing services to those folks and not only helping to provide services, but actually to help with their funding. And we're in the process of working with Reach right now to identify a location for their long-term planning to get through this situation. So these are definitely groups that we're working with. And so business is not as usual, like we've talked about. One of the things that we established early on is that the administration team meets daily. It's not a weekly meeting anymore, so it's in real time that we're able to respond to these issues as they come up. It's a lot along the lines of the newsletter that we're sending out. The idea behind that was to get out the information to the public as quickly as possible and not wait for the end of the week to give the information out. So everything we're doing is trying to take a proactive footing in this very reactive kind of emergency, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and highly appreciated that you're meeting every day with your administrators because this is changing every day. So I know that probably the question that I'm going to ask, you don't have the answer because just less than an hour ago, the governor issued this stay-at-home order, but I know that the city has been very proactive to support local businesses, specifically restaurants, so they can, people can buy orders for home and pick them up. I don't know how this is going to look now with this stay-home order, if people are going to be allowed to go and pick up this food or if these restaurants are not going to be what he called the essential business or not, but I highly appreciate the job that the city has done in support business. And I think Council Member Prince has a question.
Actually, I have a question. I have some information on that.
Oh, thank you.
According to his order, you are still, restaurants are still able to be open for takeout only, that is considered part of the order. He can still, he modeled it after California's.
Oh, thank you.
And Council President?
Yeah, Council Member Ojalan.
Thank you. Yeah, and another idea that I sent an email to the chamber about, and apparently they're already working on, is this idea of encouraging people to buy gift certificates from their favorite local businesses because a gift certificate is something you can use when life gets back to normal, but it's the cash infusion of the purchase right now that the businesses need the most.
Yeah, thank you, Council Member Ojalan, for that. And I don't know if Chief or someone from Economic Development is on the line, that they can give us a little bit briefing, or you, Mayor, about all the help that the city has been providing to our local businesses?
Actually, is Jennifer here?
No.
Hold on.
Obvious answer to that.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Jennifer, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you for joining us.
Of course, thank you for having me. As Mr. Mayor said, we're doing a number of things to help the local businesses. For example, we have waived all the fees and the permits associated with signage, the A-Board signs that would go out on the sidewalk to identify loading areas for takeaway and pickup and delivery for restaurants. We have been not enforcing certain things that might normally be enforced, like picking up signs. We are also, just trying to think through the various things. We have permit staff available from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. by phone or email. Anybody who needs a permit for something, one of our local businesses or our contractors, we have someone who stands outside and takes their check or their drawings if they have something to drop off that they can't submit to us. So we've been able to do that. And our staff are working remotely, almost all of them. Our inspectors are able to stay on the job. They've been inspecting the medical office building down at Valley. They have their offices in their rigs and so we've been able to let them have their ability to operate independently and they never have more than one person in their rig, so that preserves the social distancing as well.
Council President?
Yes.
So to be fair to the administrator, Cliff and Chip actually aren't with us today and I will make sure that the rest of the information gets out to the council. There's a few other things that we're actually doing for small businesses and I don't have them on the top of my tongue either, so we'll make sure we get that information to you because there are a couple of things that we're doing to try and help small businesses besides financial, so we will get you that information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I also appreciate the work that the city is doing collaborative with the Ritten Chamber of Commerce because I know that they are, Diana Dobson is working very, very hard and I know that you two are strong leaders of this community and especially that you guys have deep roots in this city, are doing a great job to be able to help our business that right now they are very, very, very much impacted by this situation.
Council President?
Yes, Council Member Ojalan.
I do have another question and this has to do with our immediate financial and revenue impacts from lack of sales tax and BNO and do we have, I know that we are a very strong, financially stable community, which is wonderful, but have we given any thought to what is the immediate short-term impact to our revenue bottom line for the next, you know, March, April, potentially May? Thank you.
This is Jan Hahn, I can take a stab at that. It's a little bit premature to determine exactly what the impact will be because we, as you know, we're a couple of months behind lagging in our sales tax receipts and the revenues that we have been taking in on the BNO tax are for fourth quarter of 2019. So it's going to be a while before we see the exact impact of that on the city. However, we are monitoring it very carefully. This is one of the reasons the city has such great reserves in place to help us get through it and we have held back some of our investments so that we have a good deal of liquidity to get us through this period.
Thank you, Council Member Ojalan. Jan, the, obviously I can imagine that the way our budget is going to start looking this year is somehow, somewhere is going to be impacted. So are we going to have to modify the schedule that we have already for that budget?
I think, Council President, I think, kind of just to bounce off what Jan said, I think we're a little bit too early to be able to really tell yet. I'm sure we're going to have to look at the budget from a different point of view, but it's really too early to determine what that actually means. You know, we are looking at what the future looks like and once we have a little more information, we will make sure we get it to the council as quick as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does anybody else have more questions on COVID-19?
Yes, Council President?
Yes, Council Member Vak.
Yeah, I appreciate the mayor and all the administrators for helping us through this COVID-19 pandemic and to keep us updated. So thank you so much for all your hard work. I wanted to ask, since the mayor had mentioned briefly that there's some things we're doing for small businesses that we'll probably soon find out, but I was wondering, and obviously the mayor and Jan can also help enlighten me on this matter, is that we have several steps right now as far as like, you know, right now we're at the impact, right? So what are we doing as a city that we could help businesses besides just doing permits? And then secondly, as far as the recovery stage, like what are some things that we could potentially do within our budget? So that is something I really want us to dig deep and think about and see if you, maybe you guys have already done the brainstorming and calculating the numbers.
We, Council President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So we actually have not started the brainstorming. I did have a really brief conversation with Bob Harrison and Doug Levy today about the future and what it looks like. As we know, all of the government agencies, Down Transit and Metro, they're all going to be looking to the state and the federal government for support. And if history shows us anything, there, more than likely, there's going to be stimulus dollars that will be coming down the pipe. I think it's going to be, serve us well if we're prepared with some of the shovel-ready infrastructure jobs or projects that provide, you know, shovel-ready jobs, basically. So that's down the road here. We haven't started communicating about that, but that's one of the things that we'll need to look at. You know, the other thing here shortly we're going to have to start looking at is, you know, what we're spending money on and how we're spending it. So the beginning of this crisis was more focused with the financial health of our residents and our business, the physical health of our residents and employees, and then lastly, we're going to start looking more at the health of the economy and the health of the city. But making sure that we have the infrastructure set up was really the priority and getting people safe. So in terms of looking down the road, those are really next steps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I don't know if Ellen is on the line, but the last report that I received for her is that we have any negative numbers, that we don't have an employee that has been reported to be positive of COVID-19?
Correct.
Good evening, Council Member, Council President Perez and Council. At this time, we do not have any known cases. However, if I remember correctly, Deb Needham let us know that King County is not able to report those numbers and we have not had any employees with a confirmed positive outcome. I believe we had one that was inconclusive, but no one with a positive outcome.
Well, these definitely are great news and I think, I want to thank you, Ellen, because I think by taking the steps that we took and allowing a lot of our employees right away to be telecommunicating and being safe has made a difference in our city. And more important also, we want to make sure that the people that are every day outside keeping the city running, which is our public works, our police officers, and as well as the people that working, going to put in the pile even if they don't work for the city on our public services, picking up the trash, obviously there's people that we want them to stay healthy and we want to do everything that we can in our power to protect them from this pandemic.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council President Perez. I appreciate your kind words.
Council President Perez?
Yes.
I just wanted to add to Council Member Van's question before. The city did issue a newsletter. We've got a whole website set up for small businesses. There's a lot of information that we did put out. The problem, as you can imagine, is that there's just been the sheer amount of information that the city has put out in various resources to try and consolidate that for this evening, but we'll make sure to get a link out to you and some information on that communication we've been doing to our small business community.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Council President, I have one more comment regarding the small businesses. If I, I know that the numbers were a little lagging because we're still in quarter four of 2019, right? So I wanted to ask, Jan, just like a rough estimate, if we, because immediate needs for our small businesses, because I've received calls and so forth for our small businesses and their support right now, if we were to do something sort of a small business stabilization fund, because this is the phase that we're in, is trying to stabilize and to support our small businesses, roughly of 150,000 to 200,000, is that something that could be potentially within the reserve? Because we are, we started out coming into this COVID-19 very positive as far as the financial.
Thank you for that question. I think that you could probably come up with that sum of money. The issue would be the state constitutionality issue of can we lend our credit? And I think that it becomes more of a legal issue than a finance issue at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Anybody else has any questions or comments?
Yes, regarding to employee, Council President, we received an email and I know it's just one resident and one employee, but I just am curious to see, has that particular situation been taken care of regarding that, I guess, nonessential or, it was a few days ago, I think, that employee?
Yeah, it was, it was the wife of one of the, our, and we forwarded that email to the mayor and Ellen, and I think that situation has been solved, but I want to let them speak.
Yeah, thanks.
Ellen, could you give us an update? I know that you've been in direct communication with the wife.
Yes, Mayor Provone, I have been in contact, well, actually not myself, but my labor manager, Kim Gilman, reached out to her and explained what we are doing and that we were waiting for really a directive from the governor and from Mayor Provone to take further steps and we will be in conversation later tonight and tomorrow to put those steps into action. And we were able to ease her mind by letting her know what we were doing and we have not had further communication with her, so we are hoping that she was satisfied with our answer.
Thank you, Ellen.
You're welcome.
Any more questions or comments?
Council President?
Yes, Council Member Ojalan.
I'm just wondering about the impact on our census 2020 and actually, to tell you the truth, this was a great idea that came from my husband, Michael, and that is that since we're having so much more and frequent communication with our public during this time, if it isn't something that we could tag onto that communication as a reminder, you know, every day or as part of the weekly newsletter that goes out or any other conversations that we're having with the public, please, please, please fill out your census and tell your neighbors to fill out their census and here's the number where we're at, we're only at 11% or whatever it is, really just to get that out there.
Council President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Council Member Ojalan, you must not read my newsletter, we say it every time. I think the last two newsletters, it wasn't included in. I think the last two newsletters, it wasn't included in, just because we had some very important things we wanted to really focus on. But that will be, the message continued and that is the direction with the census. We had received funds for the trusted advisors and we've been successful on getting approval to reallocate those dollars, to use them through social media. So we're still trying to do the best we can in terms of communicating in every possible way to the residents. And yes, every, every form of communication hopefully has something about the census in it also.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I am, I'm really concerned about the census. I'm really concerned about the responses and I know that you're concerned as well and I know that your staff is concerned as well. And yeah, we are doing social media a lot of work and I'm pushing it and reminding everybody that I talk to every day. But I also saw a press conference when they asked the president that if they had considered to move the deadline and they say that this has not been even a discussion right now on any city, because I know cities are right now more worried about the COVID-19 pandemic, but I'm very, very concerned about the people that I have reached that are struggling in answering some of the questions, especially where some of the people, English is their second language, some, they don't feel easy about responding some of these questions. And when I saw the last demographic results of how many people in Renton have responded, we are still not even 10%. So we need to push this message very, very hard. Okay, any more questions? Yes, Council.
Yes, Council President, I know that we're just talking about the census and that's also very important to me and we have to find different creative ways to get our communities that have been undercounted to be counted without putting them in harm's way. But on that note, just with this COVID-19, I know we have another topic on this agenda here for the committee, but I wanted to stress the community impact as far as the Asian, the Chinese community that has been impacted due to the occupant of the White House stating that this is a Chinese virus and it's something that I take very seriously about and there has been concerns within our communities. And I say communities because the Asian community is not just one community. And that I know that city, the mayor and administrators have been very much welcoming and helping our community residents, community members through this process, but that's just something that I want to bring up so that we are more aware of that. And thank you, Mayor, for putting a newsletter that you know the virus obviously doesn't discriminate, it just happened to be originated from that area geographically, but certainly it doesn't attach to just one particular individual. But there are hate crimes on the rise for a particular, leading with Asian descent folks, so just want to bring that up.
Thank you, Councilmember Van. Because we don't have that much time left, I want to make sure that we cover the other two items that we have in the agenda. Any emerging issues that anybody has? Good. The next one was the emergency proclamation for the eviction moratorium, which has already been issued last Friday. Do you want to comment on that, Mr. Mayor?
This was about, this is the noise proclamation?
The moratorium proclamation for evictions, the one on Friday.
Oh, yeah, it was basically to follow suit with the governor's request and basically tell the public that we will be joining the governor and supporting his decision not to allow evictions.
Thank you very much and I appreciate also all the job that we have done to support our, especially the people that are going to be losing their jobs and they're not going to be able to pay rent and water and sewer and all the effort that we are going to provide for our residents and let them know right now that they can calm down, that we are going to be behind them and right now it's important just to stay home as much as possible so nobody gets sick and then support them during these tough times. Any, anything else that anybody has questions, comments? No? Well, thank you very much. Yes, yes, Councilmember McKeery.
Yes, so a question on the moratorium. There's one issue that I wanted to make sure we also addressed that isn't, I think, included in the current language and that's the issue of late fees. I know several local jurisdictions, Kenmore, Buryan, Woodinville, Auburn and Everett have all taken local action, in addition, oh, and Issaquah as well, to ban the late fees and I want to make sure that's something we're also taking care of potentially as well.
Councilmember McKeery, this is a policy decision, so if you want to bring it in table during the council meeting, we can have a discussion about that and I'm happy to address that issue during council meeting. Is that okay?
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Van?
I'll just bring it at the seven o'clock council meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I'll see, we will see you in five minutes, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.